On May 28, 2024 to order and a moment of silence and pledge of allegiance with Gina Kree.
I would like to take a moment of silence for us to reflect on a peaceful, restful, safe and enjoyable summer vacation, hopefully that will be had by our students and families and teachers and all the staff members of the Enfield District School System. I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, fire evacuation in the unlikely event of a fire. You can exit out the rear doors of the chambers now to the parking lot, or you can go at the side doors over here, take a left down the stairway and out to the parking lot. Kathy, can I have the roll call, please?
Mrs. Akri?
Here.
Dr. Kalman?
Here.
Mrs. Kushman?
Here.
Mr. Genitis?
Here.
Mr. Kovar?
Here.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Here.
Mrs. Pickett?
Here.
Mr. Ryder?
Here.
Chairwoman Riley?
Here.
Okay, board guests for the accountability update.
Come on up, guys. So tonight we have our chief academic officer, Michelle Middleton, Enfield High School principal, Erin Clark, and our school counseling coordinator, David White. They are gonna, I have a feeling this will be the last indicator presentation we have for you, so we've got a few of them. We have number seven, on-track high school graduation, number eight, four-year graduation rate, number nine, six-year graduation rate, and number 10, post-secondary entrance rate. So I will leave it over to these fine folks.
Hello again. I've brought Dave and Erin back with me. The first indicator, number seven, is on-track to high school graduation, and what this measures is the percentage of students who earn at least six credits by the end of grade nine. A note on that, it's only been six credits for a couple of years. It used to be five, and they upped it. So now it's six credits earned by the end of freshman year. And they have found that on-track students are three and a half times more likely to graduate in four years, which is why they look at this indicator. The maximum point the state awards for this is 50. The state target is 94 percent. And you'll see up there it says that in 22, 23, Enfield High earned 82 points, hit the target of 82.5 percent, which earned us 43.9 percent, 43.9 points out of 50 for the indicator.
Good evening. Every year I tell our incoming ninth-grade parents how ninth grade is hands down the most important year of their education. The team at DHS has worked consistently on implementing research-based strategies to increase success for ninth graders. Identified best practices for improving the ninth-grade experience include activities such as transition activities, advisories, credit recovery opportunities, career exploration opportunities, and supports for English language learners. Since we combined high schools, we have improved supports for students in all of these areas. In terms of transition activities, the high school sponsors a number of events to acclimate freshmen, Program of Studies Night, Eighth Grade Visit Day in May, Freshman Orientation in August. Another agreed-upon best practice is having catch-up courses and credit recovery opportunities for students. We have implemented courses in math, such as fundamental math, to support students with lagging skills. We have also seen great results with our credit recovery opportunities. What credit recovery can do for a freshman is give them hope and help them catch up before failure is certain. We hope to continue to be able to offer these supports to our students. Career exploration activities are identified as a high-leverage practice in helping students see the importance of their schoolwork. Our career counselors, Colleen and Jamie, have done a phenomenal job organizing field trips and bringing in guest speakers so that students can explore a variety of careers and see, understand how they may use their education after high school. In terms of supporting English language learners, the district has made significant strides. Due to better training and staffing, we've been better able to support these learners. One of the biggest challenges for middle schoolers is going from a team structure that can feel like a small learning community to a large high school. To try to make the school feel smaller and ensure students have the supports they need, we assigned a dean and a counselor to each student that stays with that student for four years. Our deans and counselors work together to check in with students, build relationships. They identify students having attendance, behavioral, and academic concerns. They conduct attendance and student intervention team meetings and work to get supports in place. They are often the first line of defense if students are in crisis. Finally, our professional development has focused on improving engagement for all through active learning strategies that promote a high level of participation. We believe our educators are our most powerful means of impacting student engagement and reaching students.
When John Ding and I came in March with the last two indicators, numbers five and six, we put together graphs of some of the surrounding alliance districts to see where we fell in line. So we did the same thing for these indicators, exact same districts as last time. And you'll see that for this indicator, we're in the top half of the alliance districts around us. So number eight is the four-year graduation rate for all students. These rates take, the four-year rate takes a year to catch up because students can be, graduate over the summer, and also it's an adjusted, they call it an adjusted cohort because they go back and they look and see what cohorts started in grade nine and finished in grade 12, together the same students in four years. So it takes a year for us to get them. This, the maximum points for this category is 100. The target for the state is 94 percent. And in 2022, 2023, our rate was 89 percent, which earned us 94.7 points out of 100 for this indicator.
So there are a combination of factors that have impacted the four-year graduation rate. Erin touched upon this, but there's been a very collaborative approach between the administrative team at the high school, the counselors, and it also includes the secretaries. So there are regular meetings throughout the year to conduct credit checks, attendance, check on attendance status for students. And there are a couple special notes on this line graph that you're seeing. So in the 1819 school year, there was a change in the schedule over at the high school, which allowed for more opportunities to earn credits for students. So there's a spike that you see there. And then it's also important to note that in the 2122 school year, there was the updated grading policy after COVID. So there was a change of the grading policy in which 50 was the minimum failing grade.
And you'll see that when we compare ourselves to those other alliance districts, we are second for this indicator. Indicator nine is the six-year graduation rate for high-needs students, and this one represents the percentage of first-time ninth-grade students who graduate with a regular diploma in six years or less. The maximum total, again, for this category is 100, and the state target is 94. And in 22, 23, our rate for this indicator was 89.4, which earned us 95.1 points out of 100 for this indicator.
While we strive to have students complete high school within four years, there are some who take five or six years to graduate but are still able to get that diploma. As you know, the high-needs category includes economically disadvantaged students, English learners, and students with disabilities. One example of students who may need six years to graduate are students with significant developmental disabilities that go on to ETLA. Students in the high-needs category traditionally need more support. With our current structure, staffing, and programming, we were able to see improvements in the percentage of students succeeding in this category. Efforts to improve outcomes for this group include the increased support for the English language learners that I mentioned earlier in terms of staffing and systems and training. Other factors that have been successful in supporting our students with disabilities include additional staffing for programs, such as our adaptive learning program and our SOAR program for students with emotional disabilities. To assist with the significant needs of these students, the addition of behavior technicians has been extremely helpful. Furthermore, the addition of social workers has been invaluable as we work to address the growing mental health needs of our students and the needs of regular education students as well. Finally, credit recovery opportunities through edgenuity and through the alternative education program at the annex have helped students in this category to graduate. While the programs can be helpful in supporting our students, the success of these students can, in most cases, be attributed to caring educators, counselors, and school leaders that were dedicated to their success. I'm very proud of the work our devoted team has done to support these learners.
And you'll see for this indicator, we're right in the middle of the graph. The last indicator for tonight is post-secondary entrance, and this is the percentage of all students in a graduating class who enroll in a two- or four-year college any time after their first year after high school graduation, which, again, is why this data lags behind a year because they have, they can enroll anytime. The maximum points for this category is 100. The state target is 75 percent. And last year, we, our rate was 69.5 percent, which earned us 92.7 points out of 100 for this indicator.
There have been a combination of efforts to try and work on this indicator. So counselors have yearly meetings with their students, but we've actually been really fortunate to team up with a lot of staff from over at S-Nuttuck. They have come over to our building upwards of 10 times this year, and that's admissions staff and financial aid staff, trying to work with our students and families to either complete applications for CT State, to complete the FAFSA. Regardless of whether or not they're going to be attending CT State, their staff is actually happy to help any family who needs help completing the FAFSA. And we've also had some different admitted student events. So we've had staff from UConn admissions come back and meet with students after they've been accepted to help review next steps, and the same with staff over at CT State and a couple other schools as well. Couple other points that are important here are that we've had to keep, or something that we've tried to keep a closer eye on is the percentage of students who are undecided or reporting that they are not sure what they want to do. So we recognize that it's okay to change your mind, that there are students who just aren't sure yet. I mean, deciding your entire future when you're 18 can be a large task. But a couple years ago with the class of 2022, 23.6 percent of our seniors reported that they were undecided, which was kind of a concerning statistic. And last year, we tried to zero in on that number and reduce it so that we tried to make sure that each senior had some type of a plan lined or mapped out by the time they graduated. And we reduced that down to 11.2 percent of seniors in the class of 2023 who reported being undecided. So I'm hoping that we can continue to cut into that number a little bit. But I have to note a couple special parts that played into that. So there's a lot of work that's done through the Career Center and a lot of exposure given to students with different types of careers that are out there, whether it's through field trips or guest speakers, counselors obviously meeting with their students, and then the ability of local area college representatives to come and visit and work with our students.
And for this indicator, we were the top in of these schools. So, any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Go.
Ladies first.
Okay, man, go for it. Thank you.
I don't really have a question. I want to say thank you to the three of you. Honestly, I think this presentation should be clipped, and we should re-watch it again in two years. I heard from you what's working: an eight-period course load, credit recovery options, additional supports from deans, counselors, behavior techs, our Career Center, ELL supports. It's really hard for me to hear this presentation tonight, knowing that the discussions that we're going to be have moving forward regarding our budget. So I want to thank the three of you and all the staff that has made this happen. I know it's more than just you. It's the everyday staff who are impacting our students and our families and our students for the hard work that they do. We should be proud of these indicators. I'm worried for us ahead. I'm concerned. We, you really do have an unrealistic ask to address these indicators without the additional supports needed. So, thank you.
Mr. Genitis?
Two questions. As far as S-Nuttuck, is there much of a push to try to get a lot of kids to attend S-Nuttuck after graduation, A, just to go there and figure out what they want to do, and B, because they get a better benefit if they do well at another state college?
So I'll help to answer that question. Right now, the state is running the PAC program, which allows students to attend CT State, which includes S-Nuttuck and the other community college branches and campuses, and students can attend for free. So even if you're undecided or not sure, it's great if, we're trying to encourage students to take advantage of that opportunity, just in case the state decides to change that. Because if you can go to school for free, and maybe that sparks another interest or opens up another opportunity, then there's a chance that students will stick with it. Obviously, I think each of us probably knows a lot of people who have stepped away from school and then found it really difficult to go back to school, especially for college-level courses. Can you repeat the second part of that question?
Say, just if you're trying to get them to go to S-Nuttuck.
Okay, all right, yeah.
A, go, and B, the advantage they get if they want to go on to a four-year school.
Yeah, the advantage, continuing with that, I mean, they could go complete an associate's for free.
Yep.
And then after that, there's a, there's a transfer policy with the CSU State University System in Connecticut. So if students finish their associate's at CT State, if they maintain a C average or better, then they're guaranteed acceptance into Central, Southern, Eastern, and Western. If you maintain a B average or better, then that can get you into UConn coming out of CT State. So there's definitely, you know, a helpful piece to continuing on at CT State and going for free.
Okay, second question. The kids that are involved in voc-ed, is there any help in trying to get them to find a career or get placed someplace once they've graduated, or are they just on their own? You know, automotive, electricians?
Yeah, we can come find for that, too. Sorry, I'll jump in. So, yeah, CT State, they also have manufacturing options that are there as well. So even if you're interested in a trade school type of an option, there are programs that are there. And from what we're hearing from the S-Nuttuck staff is that employment rates are very high. And even while you're there at S-Nuttuck, there are employers from local companies who are coming in recruiting before they even, before students even finish. So there are opportunities for vocational ed through.
So there's things that transfer from Enfield High to S-Nuttuck, and then other people go, okay.
Yeah, yep.
I'm not crying, I just got something in my eye. Thank you.
Anybody else have any? Okay, thank you, Ms. Moore.
Hello, thank you for presenting tonight. I just wanted to touch on a few things. So I noticed where we rank in, with our alliance districts, and we're doing quite well, considering we didn't get any money. So that's, that's an interesting fact. And a lot of this is achieved by extra support staff, which we were able to add during COVID, so I want to say that. I'm also glad you brought up the deans, because at the council meeting, someone said we have five deans, without really understanding that we have four. And there was a team approach that when you enter in high school, you stay with that team all the way until you're a senior, and the deans have major roles in the, in the students' lives. So I'm glad you brought that up and that I could clarify it. So the other thing, and it was kind of to what Peter was saying, so for the post-secondary, S-Nuttuck offers so many wonderful certificate programs. So even if they're going there for a certificate program, like, they wouldn't come out with an associate's degree, do you still consider that post-secondary enrollment and completion, or is that included in your numbers?
So as far as the statistics that we're in here, the state is judging it off of students who enroll for a two-year or a four-year program, specifically like for an associate's or a bachelor's.
Okay, because I know that there's kids that go for welding, cosmetology, phlebotomy, but those are not necessarily degree programs, but they are certificate programs that I think, they're pretty intensive, right? They're at least 18 months, if I'm not mistaken. So that's unfortunate, because I do see a lot of kids that are going in that route and then entering the workforce that
Right.
are actually doing that.
Exactly.
So, because I feel like, S-Nuttuck and so many of the community colleges offer these excellent certificate programs for kids who want to go into the workforce but have something niche that they want to go into and allows them to do that. So thank you again for your presentation.
Anybody else? Okay, Mr. Kovar.
Just a quick question I thought of with the post-secondary entrance, and maybe I missed it, but the parameters for it, so it's a, they have to enroll in a degree-generating program. Is it immediately, like, that first semester, or is it within a one-year period?
It's within the one-year period after they graduate from high school.
So if they do take a semester off, but they
Right.
go, that also counts?
Even if they take a year off, I think it would count, yep.
Yeah, year, okay. All right, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, so going on that, it doesn't go to if they enrolled, they went for half a semester and then dropped out, so does that count? Like, or is it just, hey, here's our stat, it's a...
I don't know the answer to that, but I would say that they do take a year to look at it. So if you enrolled right after your, your senior year of high school and you dropped out before that year was over, I'm pretty sure that would, you know, I'm pretty sure they would know that. I don't know. Maybe they wouldn't, I don't know.
I don't know. I don't know if it's just...
That's an excellent question, to which I don't know the answer.
No, no, that's okay, but, you know, it would be nice if the state would clarify these things. And it's, it's, doesn't help us if we have a lot of kids that end up going the tech route and they don't enroll in a degree program. Well, I mean, what if they did something at S-Nuttuck that doesn't generate a degree, and then they get a, you know, an, not an internship, but, you know, apprenticeship, that's what it looked for, yeah? And then they got a job, well, that's, that's a super success, too, so.
Absolutely.
It benefits that person, just not do statistics.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, but I'm saying those, people with those successes should fall into this, because it makes it seem like, well, just because you didn't want to go to a two- or four-year college, then you're not worthy enough, but that's not true.
Agreed.
That's just my thing. And then the only other question I have, I saw it on one slide, and I just didn't know what the acronym was. What's the SIT team?
Student Intervention Team.
Gotcha, okay.
Perfect.
Well, these results are not bad at all. I'm kind of feeling a little weary about where they're going to go, but we have really smart students here, and we have very dedicated educators and staff. So thank you for the presentation. I really appreciate it. You guys did a wonderful job. All right.
Thank you.
I think we're good. Okay. Interim Superintendent, Mr. Longy, how are you?
Doing great, thank you.
We have your superintendent's report.
How's everyone doing? Well, it's Kayla's probably last meeting, right? She's heading out to Winu soon, the old Winnic. So Izzy, okay, we let the senior go first? All right.
Okay, so before this meeting, I got some excited, exciting news about the baseball and softball teams regarding states. They both won their games. Baseball won 4-2 and will be playing tomorrow at Powder Hollow at 3:30. They don't know their opponent yet. And softball won 3-2 and will be playing tomorrow at EHS at 3:30, and they also don't know their opponent yet. And then track will also be competing in states tomorrow at New Britain High School. And field events will start at 4:00, and track events will start at 4:30. And then the track team is hosting their annual Spitfire Track Meet on June 6 from 3:30 to 4:30 at the EHS track. Any kids pre-K through fifth grade can sign up. It's a great opportunity, I'd suggest going out. And then we are going to be hosting our Next Level Ceremony on June 3 at 2:30 in the EHS gym, where we honor all the students who are playing at the next level in college. So that's a cool opportunity we're having, too.
Okay, Kayla. I mean, excuse me, Izzy, sorry.
Yeah, in school, we have a lot of stuff regarding seniorship. So tomorrow at EHS, we have our Youth Vote Senior Voter Registration Drive at 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in the EHS lobby. So if you're 18 or older and you want to get your voter registration, you can get it done there. Also, finals for both seniors and non-seniors start next week, as well as the last day to order senior send-offs, which are like little, like, sweet treats and messages that you send to seniors to, like, say bye to them. The last day to order those is June 1. Senior prom was May 24, and I heard that it went really good. So also additionally to that, the first Black and Brown Student Meeting, Student Union Meeting is tomorrow during Eagle Block. So if anyone was signed up for that, it's tomorrow. Excited to see you guys. Also, we had our cultural fair, May 22, which was a huge success, so thank you for everyone that participated, and a big thank you to the Language Department, because all the Language Departments, they contributed to doing the posters and stuff. And also congratulations to everyone that received an award or scholarship, May 20, on awards night. Thank you.
Okay, so adult education graduation. Board members, you've been invited to attend the Adult Education Graduation Ceremony, and that's being held on Thursday, June 6 at 6:00 p.m. at the annex, and a quorum agenda is enclosed in your packet that you have. Special Board of Ed meeting, the board will hold a special meeting tomorrow, Wednesday, May 29, here in council chambers, to approve the changes of the 2425 budget. An agenda for this special meeting is enclosed in your packet, and there is no update at this time, so that concludes the interim superintendent's report.
Thank you, Andy.
You're welcome.
All right, we are on number eight, audiences. Okay, all right, we have one for this evening. Maureen Griffin, you get four minutes and just state your name and your relationship to the district, and you can go for it.
Maureen Griffin, mother of three, who will be in the high school next year. I want to suggest to everyone out there and tell everyone you know that has children in the district to watch that meeting tomorrow night. Our esteemed mayor and his buddies cut the budget severely. And I checked in with admin, again, of a couple of the schools. They never had any inquiry from town council people, yes, from school admin, how we can survive on this withered budget. They don't know what the hell they cut from us. They don't know what they've done to the schools. But I hope that when you guys are discussing it tomorrow, you list everything, down to every elective, the name of it, give them their damn line item of everything that they've cut and everything they've taken from our children. And then, people out there, let our esteemed mayor and his buddies know how much you appreciate, how much they support education. It really frustrates me and angers me to listen to these people that just spoke, like what you were saying, Amanda, the progress they've made. My kids, I've gotten to know their deans over the years, so whenever you need something, I know who to call. When they have a question or a concern, they just call me and say, hey, Maureen, I'm calling. Oh, God, what the, oh, okay, you know, good. You need that, because high school is hard for the kids. It's worse than it was when we were kids. And now, I don't know what you guys have left for the kids, but I know the kids are really scared about what's going to come down tomorrow, rightfully so. I want people to remember this. I hope every senior who's voting age goes to that voter drive, that registration drive, and registers. And I'll be saying it again next year, I'll be sitting here again next year saying the same darn thing. Register, remember, and to every parent, and I'm sure the lower grades are getting hammered, too. Right when you need the supports to build the foundation for punching holes in the foundation, you let Kenny Boy know how much we appreciate.
Thank you, Maureen. Okay, that is it for audiences. Okay, board member comments. Who would like to go first? Anybody? Okay, Dr. Kalman, you can go first, thank you.
Okay, so the draconian cuts being proposed for the school budget are really beyond comprehension. I'd like to know what purpose is really being served. Is it supposed to be some perverse way of demonstrating fiscal responsibility? Is the well-being of our children and our school staff to be sacrificed on the altar of so-called fiscal responsibility? The cuts being proposed are nothing short of cruel and short-sighted. We stand to lose so many teachers who have already received their pink slips, in addition to many very valuable school programs and services. In the long term, I suspect our teacher workforce will eventually shrink even further by virtue of attrition. Any rational teacher is bound to ask why they should continue to work in a school system that doesn't give a damn about them. Teachers today are in a seller's market. Enfield teachers may not want to leave this community, but they can readily find employment elsewhere in towns that actually value their services. Inevitably, following the laws of supply and demand, the town of Enfield will eventually be forced to increase teacher Enfield will eventually be forced to increase teacher pay in order to entice teachers to return. In the meantime, how many young working families are going to be willing to move into a town that places such a low premium on education? How many young working families currently living in Enfield will choose to stay? In the long run, any short-term tax benefits deriving from treating our school personnel in such a shabby manner will be largely, if not completely, offset by the loss of a significant portion of the tax base. The result? Sooner or later, it will be the taxpayers who will have to cover the shortfall in spades. The voters will recognize the myopia behind this shameful policy in due time, and those responsible for it will be held accountable. I also just wanted to mention, I just got out of a meeting with the Committee on Mental Health of the American Academy of Pediatrics, and I'm cautiously optimistic. I think they recognize that schools don't operate in a vacuum, that schools depend upon community resources, one of which is the pediatrician community. And I'm hoping that the American Academy of Pediatrics is on the cusp of launching a statewide early childhood, well, pediatric mental health initiative to complement what's going on in the schools. So let's keep our fingers crossed because I think schools can't solve this problem alone. They have to rely on community resources. And the one resource that has been untapped to date is the pediatrician community. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Callan. Who would like to go next? Anybody? Anyone want to go next?
The awards and scholarship program hosted last week at the Enfield High School was a wonderful opportunity to celebrate the achievements of our high school students. So I wanted to offer a special congratulations to our own student representatives, to Elizabetha Denald and Kayla Suprenant, to Alicia Lizette and to Jimmy Padilla, who also was named, Jimmy was named as the co-valedictorian. I also wanted to offer a special congratulations to some of our most recent board guests, William Bergman, Brennan Archer, and Sophia Carrier.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gushman. Who would like to go next? Ms. Akri?
On May 15th, last week at Enfield High School, I attended the Prudence Crandall Music Spring Concert. It was excellent as usual. The chorus students did a great job and they were led by music teacher Melissa Clark. The children sounded beautiful. Their harmonies were on point. My favorite songs that were sung, I love when they sing "Why We Sing" and they had a very cute song called "Banana" that ended the program. The string orchestra, which was led by Carlos Stoddard, and the Crandall Band, led by Eric Spoldy, they also performed and did very well on their instruments. These musicians are working very hard to master their skills on their instruments, and it really shows. And I would like to thank Ms. Elizabeth Tomsett for her beautiful piano playing since she supports the student performances. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Akri. Who would like to go next? Ms. Pickett?
Tonight sucks. Tomorrow's going to suck even more. I'm not going to be addressing the 24-25 school budget this evening. I've had a chance to review the proposed budget adjustments, but it's my understanding that we're going to discuss more in executive session this evening and hold the special meeting tomorrow. I will reserve my comments for next year's budget for tomorrow night. This has been incredibly challenging for me. The discussions we have are impacting people, many people. I want to thank publicly the students, the staff, and the families and the residents that have come out to support our budget. It's because of our bipartisan efforts that we've gotten this far. And I truly want to thank you, Charlotte, for your leadership. It's been clear and evident that you are focused on students and public education, and I commend you for keeping politics out of this discussion. However, with that being said, the budget decision depends on the town council, and it's clear that we do not have support for public education from the current town council majority. I want to tell staff, students, and families to not give up. November 2025 isn't far away. We have to remain committed. There's also elections this November for the State House. It is obvious we need a champion for EPS at the State House. Please make sure you're involved in those elections as well. Someone I admire sent me this quote, and I think it's perfect for how I'm feeling. If you're going through hell, keep going. I do think it's important that we do clarify some budget questions and events around our current and past budgets. So tomorrow I'll discuss next year, but tonight I do want to clarify some things regarding this year's budget. Budgeting for the last two years was more complicated and challenging than ever with the new alliance designation. The district and the town appropriately budgeted for the past two years as every other alliance district in the state budgets. Magically, June of the year that we were identified, after our budget timeline, the state decided not to exit the districts and to expand the list from 33 to 36 alliance districts. With this expansion, we got a different calculation for alliance funding, which left us with no official alliance grant. Instead, the state adjusted the ECS amount that the town received. The town received the full ECS amount of about $29.4 million instead of the approximate $28 million that was proposed due to our alliance designation budgeting. It was decided by town leadership that the additional $1.4 million for the past two years went into the general fund. The full ECS amount has always been given to the Board of Ed. I will share that it's been a hard realization for me personally. As a Dem that was a majority for the past two years, it's not okay. And I don't remember any of these conversations happening regarding this $1.4 million for the past two years, and I am disappointed that our leadership at EPS didn't more transparently share this issue and concern and weigh in on how the town utilized the full ECS funds versus our proposed amount. This budgeting practice of the past two years seems to have many people confused. Statements like "the Board of Ed was fully funded" is not exactly true. Yes, we were given what we proposed based on information that we had at the time. Unfortunately, that didn't come to fruition. On May 20th, Tina and Charlotte had to go before the council to ask for money to cover our expenses for this year. There are numerous factors that impacted this budget shortfall, including how we budgeted for this alliance funding, along with additional sped students, the state's excess cost contribution, change to the special ed transition age, and others. And for me, watching two bipartisan Board of Ed leaders clearly articulate this, yet met, sorry, stipulations for giving us our own money was sickening. It's clear that there's a lack of understanding of school funding, budgeting, and frankly, I have my own concerns about the town's financial practices. That's all I'm going to share this evening. I will be sharing more tomorrow. Staff, families, and students know that I will not stop advocating for you.
Thank you, Ms. Pickett. Who would like to go next? Go ahead, Mr. Rider.
So I'll save my Eli Whitney updates to when we talk about our school-specific issues. But there's something that Eli Whitney's doing that the other schools may be doing as well, so just wanted to address that one item at this point. So as everybody may remember, our kids mayor won on a mental health platform. And our Enfield kid mayor, in Eli Whitney, and I would encourage the other schools to do this as well, but on Wednesday, June 5th, everyone is encouraged to wear green for NAMI, N-A-M-I, which stands for the National Alliance on Mental Illness, as part of our kid mayor's mental health platform. So if any principals or administrators hear this and would like to do that as well, just reach out to Ms. Flanagan at Eli Whitney, and she can share her flyer with you. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Rider. Who would like to go next? Go ahead, Mr. Culver.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. I'll be brief today because we have different agenda items coming up, and I'll address things as they appear on the agenda, obviously, today and tomorrow. This is obviously a time of a lot of change and a lot of important things going on. Obviously, the current budget, next year's budget, superintendent search, policies, stuff like that. So I think we're doing a good job as a board, as has been mentioned, with the bipartisan efforts. I think we need to keep that going. I do want to tie in, obviously, my goals that I've been repeating the last few meetings about focusing on transparency, and I think we have a good relationship with the board and trying to reach out to the council on that. So as I said, I think that's all I have, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Culver. Anybody like to go next? Tina, would you like to go next?
Just a couple of things. I was also going to bring up, like I did the last meeting, that it is Mental Health Awareness Month and that we should always check on our friends and family, especially the ones that seem to smile every day. And you don't always know their struggles, but just a quick, hey, how are you? Text or call could do a lot of good in a person's lives. In a person's life. As Ms. Pickett said, Chairwoman Riley and I went to the town council meeting on May 20th to explain in detail why we had a budget shortfall this year. So there's many myths and untruths floating around. So please, I encourage you to watch that meeting on May 20th. It was right at the beginning of the meeting and it lasted almost an hour. Chairwoman Riley, I think you did a great job with the narrative and answering questions, so I appreciate everything you did to get us prepped for that meeting. I also want to talk about the alliance district designation. That's a designation. We don't apply to be in an alliance district. We don't say, hey, I think we want extra money, so hey, we're going to go and make an application to the state for the alliance district. It's not what happens. The state designates us based on a number of different things, from socioeconomic to test scores. And then what happens is, what happened for, I don't know, 10, 12 years, is once you're in an alliance designation, the state pulls out their nifty-difty formula and decides how much money the districts are going to get. One of the myths that's out there is that we didn't apply for the money, and that's why we didn't get it. And that is categorically false. We had no money to apply for because we weren't getting any money. And I think the frustration lies is that we've been saying this how long? How many meetings? So it's not that a grant wasn't filled out. You can't fill it out until you get the money because then you have to itemize, this is how I'm going to spend X amount, and this is how I'm going to spend X amount. You can't just throw things at a wall and stick without having a dollar amount to reconcile to. I also want to address the additional support staff through COVID. And people like to say, well, COVID's over. You don't need any additional support staff. So we've had these indicators come in for the last few months. Every indicator has shown improvement. Tonight, first and foremost, we were able to improve that because we were able to put additional support staffs in the classrooms for the teachers. And I wish people understood that. And people come up and say, well, when I was in school and this and when I was here, times have changed. Times have changed greatly in the teaching profession. Times have changed greatly in our population, in our student population. And those support staffs were needed. So I'm just going to say, it'll be interesting to see what these indicators look like in two years because a lot of the reasons why things have gone up is due to the additional support staff. I'm going to talk, you know, I'm going to have a lot to say tomorrow night, obviously, during the budget presentation. And I said this last week on my own Facebook post, but I want to say this publicly tonight to the students sitting here, to the parents, to the staff. And when I say staff, I mean all staff in our building. So, dear EPS students, staff, and families, they will not take our spirit. They will not break us. We are EPS. You can bet I will be making Enfield aware of every single cut, every single job loss at the expense of our students. Things will look different in September 2024, but what won't be different is our EPS spirit. Through adversity, EPS staff shows up time and time again. We will keep reminding ourselves that we are EPS. We believe in helping every student every day. We believe in public education. We believe in our students. We believe in all our staff, and we believe in each other. We believe in kindness and acceptance, and that, all those things can never be taken away by anger or spite, ever. The students who spoke over the course of the weeks exemplified EPS and what we stand for. They become bitter when they can't break your spirit. First, they ignore you, then they laugh at you, then they fight you, then you win. Mahatma Gandhi. Lastly, we are EPS.
Thank you, Ms. Blank. Mr. Genius, you, I think, are left. I don't think that everybody else went, except for me.
You want to go first? Go ahead. You go first.
You want me to go first? All right, fine. I'll go first this time. Okay, so I'm not going to, like, repeat everything Ms. Blank said, or Amanda, you know, or Phil. It's all the same. I feel like I've been like a broken record the past, like, three weeks. Thank you for coming with me, Tina, to the meeting and working with me to get the job done. There are some things, now I'm in like, okay, like, let's fix it kind of a mode now. I said what we needed to say. We put all the information out there. Now I'm like, okay, how do we fix this? What are the ways that we can get creative and do this now? Those two wonderful people sitting over here, Mr. Longy and Ms. Middleton, and a bunch of other people at Central Office, like John Dag and Judy Carroll and Carrie Wiley, and I'm probably forgetting somebody else.
And Maureen Jewell.
And Maureen Jewell. They have been working countless hours. The minute that the decision was made last week, they've been off and running. So I want to thank them for all the time that they put in, and then all of the building administrators, principals that came in and helped the situation as well. I thank you for your dedication to this. This is not an easy ask, and especially, I'm beyond impressed that we got so far in such a short timeframe. So that's amazing. A couple of questions that I have out into the ether, you don't have to answer any of these questions because, but anyways, not really questions, mostly comments, but that there was talk about a sped waiver, a special education waiver that we could apply for. That is not a thing. So I just want to dispel that right now. You can't apply. You can't apply for a sped waiver, and then they'll magically give us our, the state will magically give us $1.7 million for this current fiscal year. It was a misunderstanding between the state and us, basically, but we already do this. It's like you have to restate your special education numbers twice a year, in like December and March as well. Yes. And we already do that. So there's no waiver that we can apply for, and 1.7 is going to magically come. So that's out of the question. The other thing is, when we were at the meeting on the 20th, they said the council wanted us to, they would give us the shortfall. They would cover the shortfall if we signed an MOU with them. And there were some things that they wanted on the MOU. And as of now, we've reached out multiple times to work on that, and we haven't had an answer back. So we're trying. We just haven't gotten anywhere with that. Another question that came up, actually talking with you guys, which makes sense, and now I would like to know where the correct procedure for covering a shortfall. Like, is there, and you probably won't know, but this is a good question to ask somebody smarter than myself, where do we, who do we go to at the state to confirm the proper procedure for covering a shortfall? Because, you know, one side of the thing is, well, do they give us, do they give us the money? Or do they pay bills for us? Or is there some other sort of accounting that has to happen? Because I wouldn't want to be, I wouldn't want us to be doing something incorrectly, and I wouldn't want the town to be doing something incorrectly, and then we get slapped by the state and we didn't know. So I would like to find out somehow where we can go to confirm, what is the exact correct procedure to do this. where we can go to confirm, that what is the exact correct procedure to do this. The other thing that I wanted to propose to the nine of us is writing, and I'll draft it, and then we can, like, look at it in leadership, maybe, and then bring it out to the rest of the board, to draft a letter to the State Board of Education to implore them to pay the excess cost that they shorted us for this current fiscal year. And I know other towns got shorted, so maybe if the nine of us sign it, we can put the feelers out to other districts, see if they want to send it too, and send it to them. I don't know if it would do anything, but it's a start. So, that's an idea that I have. And then, I just wanted to thank you guys for giving the indicators about the Alliance District, because I learned a lot that I didn't know. It definitely provided a clear pathway of how we got there, and how we can move out, and what the game plan is. That game plan might change a little bit, you know, going forward. But I think that you guys did an amazing job. I know it was a big ask of me for you guys to do all that extra work, but I appreciate it. So, the only other thing that I have to say, and I watched this motivational speaker lady, and all I want to say to all Enfield students and all Enfield staff is just to go and be great in their faces. That's all I got.
Okay. For the sake of civility, I'm not even going to address what a couple of board members mentioned earlier, because I think you were way out of bounds in some of the things that were said. And when we look at the totality of where we are right now, who controlled the town council and the Board of Ed for the last two years? This didn't just pop up. We're there, and we're going to have to work together to get out of it. But I think some unfair criticisms are being shot at various people. I think, in all honesty, I feel like I'm caught between being a former teacher and an aging taxpayer. I look at what Central Office did for the last couple of years, and it's very commendable to see the levels that you've reached. You, you've got a lot of good programs in there. You did a lot of good things. However, it's a Cadillac. And Enfield is not a Cadillac town, unfortunately. We're Ford or Chevy. And I feel we've gotten to the point now, and we're paying, we're paying or not paying for it, that we, we reached high, you went high, but you may have gone too high. That's the way I'm looking at it. I think the teachers, whether they were teachers of my generation, or teachers of this generation, or teachers of the next generation, teachers are some of the most important people in kids' lives. And good teachers will teach, no matter what, what the circumstances are. That's just the breed that you adopt as being a teacher. The kids, the kids are the most resilient people on the planet. Kids can go and flow any way you take them. And when we're looking at the diversity of, of our district, man, we're going in all different directions with the kids. And until a lot of that stuff calms down, we're still going to be running around like chickens with their head cut off. The programs that have been established, some of them are phenomenal programs. And unfortunately, some of them may have to be put on the shelf for a while. And hopefully, once we stabilize everything, then we can start bringing some of the things back very slowly. But I'm disappointed in a lot of things. I really am. And I don't, I'm just not going to get into personalities and stuff like that. So, that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Genites. All right. So, moving on. Number 10, unfinished business. Policy revisions, second reading. So, Mrs. Cushman, we have policy number, and I lost my place. Oh, 4115, right?
So, policy 4115 is the Educator and Leader Evaluation and Support Program. This updated policy replaces our current policy and aligns our district with current legislation, gives individual districts more autonomy in developing their evaluation and support program, to uniquely reflect the needs and values of the district with an emphasis on collaboration. I'd like to make a motion to approve the second reading of policy 4115 as revised.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Cushman, second by Mr. Ryder. Is there any discussion? No discussion. Sensing none. Roll call, please, Kathy.
Mrs. Accree?
Yes.
Dr. Kalman?
Yes.
Mrs. Cushman?
Yes.
Mr. Genites?
Yes.
Mr. Coover?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right. Ms. Cushman, 9322.
So, policy 9322 is the Public and Executive Sessions. During the discussion for the first reading of this policy, concern was raised about allowing remote participation for executive sessions for reasons of confidentiality. Since policy 9325.43 enables board members to participate in a meeting remotely if they are prevented from physically attending for a variety of reasons, to limit participation in an executive session exclusively to in-person could be viewed as discriminatory. In an effort to protect the confidentiality of executive sessions, the revisions of this policy clarify the right, as well as the responsibilities of individual board members, to participate remotely in executive sessions. And it also addresses the responsibility of administration to properly ensure measures are in place for security. I'd like to make a motion to approve the second reading of policy 9322 as revised.
Motion made by Ms. Cushman?
Second.
Second by Mr. Coover. Any discussion? Sensing none. Roll call, please, Kathy.
Mrs. Accree?
Yes.
Dr. Kalman?
Yes.
Mrs. Cushman?
Yes.
Mr. Genites?
Yes.
Mr. Coover?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay. 9350, Mrs. Cushman.
9326.1.
Yeah, how about 9326.1?
Oh, sorry. I skipped it. 9326.1. My bad.
Taping, recording board meetings. The revisions of this policy just more clearly define the responsibilities of the board and the board chairperson in reference to the taping and recording of specific types of meetings of the board. I'd like to make a motion to approve the second reading of policy 9326.1 as revised.
Motion by Mrs. Cushman.
Second.
Second by Mr. Coover. Any discussion? Go ahead, Ms. Pickett.
Do we know if there is, if this was, I know I asked last time, like, the intent and purpose behind this policy, since there's no legal reference. And Phil, I know you mentioned that it might have to do with FOI reasons. But this is about public recording of meetings, not about us recording the meeting and putting it on YouTube. So, do we know if there's any legal requirement for this policy?
There was no legal requirement.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay. I was sensing none. Roll call, please, Kathy.
Mrs. Accree?
Yes.
Dr. Kalman?
Yes.
Mrs. Cushman?
Yes.
Mr. Genites?
Yes.
Mr. Coover?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Abstain.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Okay. Now, 9350, Ms. Cushman. All right.
This policy, public hearings, the revision of this policy expands the conditions by which the board may hold a public hearing, to include a two-thirds vote of the full board. I'd like to make a motion to approve the second reading of policy 9350 as revised.
Motion made. Any discussion?
Second.
Second by Dr. Kalman. Any discussion? Sensing none. Roll call, please, Kathy.
Mrs. Accree?
Yes.
Dr. Kalman?
Yes.
Mrs. Cushman?
Yes.
Mr. Genites?
Yes.
Mr. Coover?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay. Moving on to number 11, new business. Policy revision, first reading. Mrs. Cushman, it's 6148.
Right. Policy 6148 is the FAFSA completion program. This policy is a state-mandated policy that aligns our district with current legislation. It states that no local or regional Board of Education shall permit any student to graduate from high school or grant a diploma to any student unless such student has completed a free application for federal student aid, an application for institutional financial aid for students without legal immigration status, or a waiver. I'd like to make a motion to approve the first reading of policy 6148.
Motion by Mrs. Cushman?
Second.
Yeah, second by Mr. Coover. Any discussion on the matter?
Yes, Madam Chair.
All right. Let's, Ms. Cushman, you can go first.
I just wanted, while we recognize that the goal, or I should say, while I recognize that the goal of this legislation is to improve post-secondary enrollment and student outcomes, it is an example of government overreach, putting an undue burden on school staff and undermining parental authority by giving a principal, school counselor, teacher, or other certified educator the authority to complete a waiver on behalf of a minor student.
Thank you, Mrs. Cushman. Go ahead, Mr. Coover.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I do want to echo the comments made by our committee chair, and I do want to reiterate. So, this is a policy update that is triggered by a state law, Public Act 23204. And one of the paragraphs in that act now sets that requirement from, coming from the state, that students, in order to get their high school diploma, need to complete the FAFSA, the Free Application for Federal Student Aid. So, I do also want to reiterate that I do view this as a undue burden. If we look back just earlier in the meeting, when we were talking about accountability indicators, our post-secondary enrollment has been in the 60%, most recently at 69.5%. So, this policy that's being forced upon us is now creating 30% of the students roughly that will need to complete a waiver, potentially for the FAFSA, because they have no intention of post-secondary enrollment, whether or not they're just not going to school, joining the military, going to VOCAT, or what have you. So, I just kind of want that reflected on the record. Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Blank.
I would also like to add that I can see this posing a very large problem to our families that don't speak English, because you need parental help in order to fill this out. The kids can do the Common App themselves during school to get their applications out and things like that. But this is, I don't like this at all. And I think it's going to pose a lot of problems. I just, I don't think it's a fair or equitable policy.
Anybody else? Mr. Ryder?
Again, I just wanted to clarify that through the protest of Ms. Cushman, Mr. Coover, and Ms. LeBlanc, this is a mandated policy. It is an unfunded mandated policy. Therefore, it is our requirement to support it. So, I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of that. I know you said it was mandated and required, Ms. Cushman, but I just want to reiterate that.
Go ahead, Dr. Kalman.
Is there any way that we can register with the state that we are supporting this under protest? I mean, it just seems kind of ridiculous to vote.
I know. I think we should, because I, I was going to say the same thing everybody else did. I think it's, it's an overreach and going to cause way too many problems.
Yeah.
This might be, we're onto something. Can we just protest everything state?
Anything the state puts out, we're good. Done.
So, here will be Amanda, the devil's advocate of the group. I think legislation had good intentions. The reality is, you want students applying for FAFSA. You want to make sure families are aware of the application and the financial aid packages, and ensuring that all students and all families know about FAFSA and have access to it. So, I wholeheartedly agree with the intention. However, I don't think we need policy. It is clear that our school, our high school in particular, is working really hard to connect with students and ensure that they are doing this. But like Mr. Ryder, it is a legislative mandate that I think we need to agree with. However, I think this is generating conversation about, not only do we have to worry about the policy we pass, but most of the policy we pass comes from the state. So, paying attention to state-level politics is really important, because that is where most of this policy comes from.
Maybe if we don't pass this, the state might realize Enfield's up here.
Mr. Ryder, what happens if we all say no or abstain?
I would ask our policy chair, Ms. Cushman, to have a discussion with Andy Longi and/or John Dag, who are liaisons of the policy committee, and they can run it through CAPE. We are a member of the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education. We could table it. We could not pass it. I don't know of that answer. I am a former policy chair, but this is a current policy, and this hasn't come up. So, until now, I should say.
Yes, Mr. Longi. Go for it.
I'm going to quote the guy who used to be here. I like all of you, but I'm not going to jail for any of you. So, state law trumps any policies you set. So, if you guys would like to protest and vote it down, I still am obligated to follow state law. So.
Right. So, the school district and the administration would still have to do this, even if we didn't include it into our books, because, again, it's, it's state law.
Well, I'll add it to our letter to the state to give us our excess cost back. I'll do that. While we're here. All right. Anybody else? Any discussion? Okay. Sensing none. Go ahead, Ms. Accree.
I guess so. Yes.
Dr. Kalman?
Yes.
Mrs. Cushman?
A weak yes.
No.
Mr. Genites is a no. Mr. Coover?
I'll abstain.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay. All right. Item 11B, to cancel the June 11 regular Board of Education meeting and replace it with a special meeting.
Could we, we're hoping we could move that till after executive session.
We're going to move that after executive session. Okay.
Madam Chair, may I make a motion to move items 11B and 11C to after item 17?
Okay. Motion made by
Second.
Mr. Ryder, second by Mr. Coover. Any discussion? Not yet, because we're going to talk about that in executive session. Okay. So, that would be a roll call. No, show of hands. Are those in favor? Raise your hands. Okay. Nine in favor, nine against. Thank you. Okay. Discussion and action regarding, oh, wait, that's after?
Move the NC.
Oh, you did the NC. Wow. I am not, this pollen's really getting to me. Okay. All right. Number 12, Board Committee Reports. Curriculum Committee.
At the last curriculum meeting, John Dag, John Dag gave a presentation on pathway-flow charts and programs of studies for their students at Enfield High. It's a student database. Mr. Dag discussed academic planning for the students. He shared with us courses that are required for graduation. He also shared the flow charts for all the courses that are offered to the students. Our next meeting will be June 20.
Thank you, Ms. Accree. Finance Budget Committee. Mr. Coover.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, no significant updates for finance and budget. Our next meeting is June 3. We have not met since our last full board meeting. I just want to notate, obviously, we will be talking probably in-depth about the current budget and trying to get some conversations on that with, through Finance Committee and with leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coover. Policy Committee.
Our most recent policy meeting involved a discussion on this FAFSA policy. Policies 2232.1, Administrative Reports, and Policy 9330, Board School District Reports, were introduced as items from the table and as policies to be reviewed and discussed at a future meeting as part of the Transparency Initiative. The June 18 meeting has been canceled. The committee will meet again on September 17.
Thank you, Ms. Cushman. Leadership Committee. We had our last leadership meeting this past Thursday. We discussed budgetary items for this current fiscal year and for next year. We talked about the agenda items for this meeting, and we also then went into discussions regarding the Superintendent Search Committee. All right. Liaison Reports. Joint Facilities. Okay. I went to that one. So, Joint Facilities was last Thursday as well. So, Joint Facilities was last Thursday as well. So, we went over the Alcorn roof replacement. The application was sent in on February 9th, and there is still no response from the state yet. And we followed up once, and basically the state said, "Don't bother them, and they'll get around to it when they get around to it." So, yep. They had a site visit on the library roof, and the contractors are working on pricing. Let's see here. The Police Department roof, the project design is at 95 percent, and then, once completed a big bid pack, it will be sent out to contractors. They are expecting to be ready to go by the end of May, if all works out. The PD roof should take about a week to do, and the library roof would probably take about three weeks to do, because there's a lot more work going on there. Hazardville and Eli Whitney Roof Update is the CSG sent closeout docs, and Andy signed them, and the town attorney still needs to sign them. And then, they upload them to Core Connecticut website for final reimbursement payment to be processed. And then, we talked about the Joint Facilities Committee becoming the, the School Modernization Committee, because basically, when JFK had their pre-ref committee, that was Joint Facilities Committee, and they were just given that charge. So, we talked about that possibly occurring.
Yeah, I would say they seemed pretty enthusiastic in starting that conversation again, which was hopeful, because we haven't talked about it in a long time.
Mm-hmm. Yep. So, the next meeting is June 13th. All right. And next up is JFK Building Committee. No, okay. Joint Security.
Next scheduled meeting is June 14th.
Enfield Mental Health Committee.
The Mental Health Committee. Sorry. The Mental Health Committee will attend and participate at the Enfield High Wellness Fair, which is this Friday, May 31st, from 10:30 to 12:30 in the school cafeteria. This wellness fair will focus on mental and emotional health. Other community organizations will also be in attendance to share information and give support to our high school students. Dr. Callen and I will schedule a meeting with Mr. Longi in June, and we will discuss inviting local pediatricians to a dinner hosted by Kite to support our student and families.
Thank you, Ms. Akri. And School Reports and Updates, who, oh, sorry, Enfield, Coach, or not?
Yeah, they're meeting right now, so I am up here. But the Summer Concert Series is starting soon, so look on the website, and they have some great acts coming this year.
Thank you, Ms. Blake. Okay, School Reports and Updates, who would like to go first? Mr. Ryder, do you want to go first?
I do. Yes, enfieldpto.com. So, at Eli Whitney, we're celebrating our Field Day tomorrow. Make sure you bring your towel, hat, sneakers, water bottle, and a change of clothes. Our One Book, Three Schools Author Visit is Thursday, May 30th. We are welcoming our author of the Lunch Lady series to our 3-5 school. Our End-of-Year Assembly at Eli Whitney is Monday, June 3rd at 9:15 a.m. Letters went out last week to families of students who are receiving an award. Please bring your own lawn chair. Then, the 5th grade celebration will begin at noon. Out back on the playground, any 5th grade parent or caregiver interested in volunteering, please contact the PTO at ewpto@yahoo.com. And a special congratulations to the following students. Haley Anderson was our Principal of the Day last Friday. Wyatt Holovich was our Assistant Principal, and Madeline Slater was our Chief of Staff, and they won our of-the-day essay contest. So, Principal of the Day, Assistant Principal of the Day, Chief of Staff of the Day. They got a chance to work with the administrators and the office staff throughout the day on Friday and found out what it really takes to run an elementary school. So, I just want to congratulate those three students on winning those essay contests, and I will see everybody tomorrow at Field Day.
Thank you, Mr. Ryder. Ms. Pickett, I saw you had your hand up.
I will just shout out enfieldpto.com as well, and also the principal newsletters that come out. I won't do justice, but Parkman Field Day is Friday. Thank you again to our PTO. They put on a great, like, dance food truck event. It's so nice to see families together at school. There's also a lot of upcoming events with 5th grade promotion, roar assemblies, and field trips, so please make sure you check out that principal newsletter. ESS, thank you to the PTO again. We had a wonderful Kona ice cream playground fundraiser. Same thing as the Parkman one, nice to be with families together. Author visit from Renata Bowers and her book, Free to Be. My daughter loved that, so thank you. I think the PTO supported that as well. There's many upcoming events, promotion ceremonies, field trips, and Field Day next week. So, thank you to our PTOs in our schools.
Thank you, Ms. Pickett. And who would like to go next? Go ahead, Mr. Coburn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick shout out to the friends and families at Henry Barnard. Couple of important dates coming up. Field Day will be this Thursday, May 30th. Grade 1 has a field trip on May 31st. Grade 2's field trip is June 5th, and Grade 2 has the opportunity to visit Crandall on June 4th. And as has been mentioned, check out the PTO website and keep an eye out for the newsletters coming from the schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Go ahead, Ms. Akri.
From the desk of Mr. DePere, this is for you, Ms. Middleton, your favorite. Crandall has a lot of fun, exciting activities coming up over the next two weeks. First off, 4th grade students will take part in an in-school field trip, Playful Engineers, and it's learning about trial and error and solving problems using engineering concepts. 3rd grade students will be traveling around the world, I'm sorry, they will be traveling around the town of Enfield, learning about all the historical events and landmarks that they have been discussing this school year. As a culmination, we are very excited to meet the author of the Lunch Lady series, Mr. Ryder mentioned before. It's Jarrett Crossaska. Does that sound right, Mr. Ryder?
I went with author of the Lunch Lady series.
Jarrett will visit Crandall on Thursday, this Thursday. Our students have been reading the 10 books in the series for the past month. The series is written as a graphic, as graphic novels. Teachers have taught our students how to read graphic novels, and many wrote their own comics. On Friday, students will take part in Field Day with a rain date of June 7th. Next week, on June 4th, 2nd grade students from Henry Barnard will be visiting Crandall to learn about the school. And on June 11th, the 5th grade students will have their final moving up ceremony. Parents, please be on the lookout for a flyer regarding the ceremony. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, so, Hazardville Memorial, this Thursday is their Field Day, or it's on June 3rd if it rains, so hopefully it doesn't. Tuesday, June 4th, is the 2nd graders visiting Eli Whitney. Wednesday, June 5th, is the kindergarten end-of-the-year ceremony. Then, Monday, June 10th, is the 2nd grade end-of-year ceremony, so that's cool. And then, the other thing that I had was, on Monday, June 10th, is the final first reader ceremony of the school year. We have 174 certified first readers that we gave invitations out to. It's going to be at JFK, and last time, we had Enfield Fire District 1 come, and they had their fire truck with them. And so, this time, not to be outdone by the firemen, is Enfield Police Department, and it will be Deputy Chief Casalascas with some other officers, and they will have their cars there for the kids to have their pictures in afterwards.
What time is that?
That is at, doors open at 5:30, ceremony starts at 6:00. All right. Anybody else? Okay. Number 14, Approval of Minutes, Regular Board of Ed Minutes, May 14th, 2024. I need a motion to approve.
So made.
Motion, motion made by Mr. Coburn, second by Ms. LeBlanc. Any discussion? Okay, thanks for making those corrections, Kathy, appreciate it. Yes, I saw those emails going back and forth, thank you. Okay, so, can I have a show of hands in favor of the minutes? Nine in favor, none against. Okay. Approval of Accounts and Peril, do we have any?
There are no items for this meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Coburn. Mr. Ryder, do we have correspondents in Board Communications?
Nothing this week, thank you.
Okay, wow, this is going pretty quick. All right, so, we are going to, I need a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. LeBlanc, second by Mr. Coburn. Any discussion? A show of hands in favor? Nine in favor, none against, and then we will come back out when we're done to vote on item 11B and C. So, thank you, guys, and have a good night. So thank you guys and have a good night.
Thank you for participating in our discussion on the impact of climate change on the lives of our citizens. We hope that this information is of interest to you and that you can take it with you when you go home. I hope you enjoy the time you spend here. Thank you very much.
All right, we are back from Executive Session. So we are going to go to Item 11B. 11B is I need a motion to cancel the June 11th regular Board of Ed meeting and replace it with -- well, we're not replacing it with anything really except for the fact that we are -- the Superintendent Search Committee needs to do interviews. And since this time of year is very busy with all the other things happening at school, that's like one of the only days that we can do it. So I need a motion to cancel that so the Superintendent Search Committee can do their job.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Pickett, second by Ms. -- oh, sorry. Motion made by Ms. LeBlanc, second by Ms. Pickett. I need -- that's a roll call vote because we're canceling a meeting. Okay, so is there any discussion on that? All right, no discussion. Sensing none, can have a roll call vote.
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Kellin?
Yes.
Mrs. Cushman?
Yes.
Mr. Genitis?
I'll abstain.
Mr. Kober?
No.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, so Item 11C is discussion in action regarding the ESNA contract agreement. So I need a motion to approve the ESNA contract agreement as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. LeBlanc, second by Mr. Ryder. Is there any discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Kober.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the Board did get to review and ask some questions regarding the agreement during Executive Session. I do think there's some reasonable concessions in there. My one hesitation on this contract would be the Board removing itself from the grievance levels. So that would be my one concern. Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, sensing none, can have a roll call vote, please, Mr. Longi.
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Kellin?
Yes.
Mrs. Cushman?
Yes.
Mr. Genitis?
Yes.
Mr. Kober?
No.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second by Mr. Ryder, second by Ms. Pickett. All those in favor, raise your hands. There are eight in favor.
I want to stay longer.[1792.12][1792.12](Laughter)
All right, there are nine in favor, none against. Thank you and have a good evening.